Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. So, to open tonight, to my left here, I have Mr. Diamorino, Ms. Kathleen Martelli, myself, Jessica Davenport, Superintendent Mr. Powers, Ms. Cusack, Ms. Ramondo, Mr. Loach, and Mrs. King. And I would like to entertain a motion to take public comment out of order.
So moved.
All right. So, the school committee meetings operate under rules that were adopted to improve information for the public, make it easier for parents, guardians, and the public to follow and comment on issues before the committee, and make meetings more accessible. Speakers must keep comments to no more than three minutes. Is anyone here for public comment tonight? The correspondence and recognition. So, community emails. We received a request for a special edit audit. Also correspondence received for a joint Bridgewater Town Council meeting for January. And as part of the consent agenda for we, sorry, as part of the consent agenda, we have President Ms. Kim Salmon and Ms. Pam Madden, Vice President Pam from Greater Bridgewater Women of Today, who are presenting a check with a donation of $500 to the closed closet at the high school where students can obtain the essentials they need.
So, I've actually already given.
Oh, okay.
To the principal.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. Would you like to say anything?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. I'm trying. I would like to make entertain a motion to take the consent agenda out of order. All right. So, we are going to vote on approval of minutes dated November 20th, 2024. Yes. All right. So, we're just going to vote on the consent agenda. Should I have a motion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes, we are going to take another thing out of order as well. We're going to entertain a motion to take the educational reports out of order. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we have Mrs. King with the Student Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mrs. Davenport. Good evening. As an update, on December 4th, 2024, the Student Advisory Council held a report school meeting, and Mr. Fitzgibbons and I attended. At that time, we discussed the goals of the Student Advisory Council for the rest of the year with respect to being part of the budget process and how they can advocate for their schools, such as meeting with Mr. Powers and advocating to their state reps at the state level. They are also in the process of working on a survey to poll their fellow students to see what the current high school students feel are important priorities budget-wise. On December 11th, 2024, the Student Advisory Council had their report school meeting and invited Mr. Powers to attend. The students had a chance to see where Mr. Powers was in his budget cycle and how they could give feedback. I now invite the Student Advisory Council to inform him. Mr. Quinn Daly.
Good evening, everyone. On Wednesday, December 4th, the Gender Sexuality Alliance at the high school went on a field trip over to Oliver Ames High School in Eastlake. Their reason for attending was for the Southeast Regional Meeting for the Mount of December. The Safe Schools Program, a branch of DESI, leads the Massachusetts GSA Leadership Council, which empowers LGBTQ+ high school students and their allies to influence policy, foster inclusive school environments, and develop leadership skills. That is what we focused on at this meeting, as well as our main talk, which was about mental health-friendly spaces in schools. Also, another event I would like to speak on is the show of gratitude for the VR marching band. This took place on Tuesday, November 26th, where the marching band played its last ever performance of their halftime show. Their show, Secret Agents MI24, featured themes from Mission Impossible and was an extremely fun show to take part in. This was very emotional for seniors because this was the last time they would be part of a halftime performance for the fall season in high school. Parents came to see, and overall, it was a very wonderful night to reflect on the very successful fall season that the marching band endured. The band is now serving as a pep band occasionally at boys' and girls' basketball games. Thank you so much for hearing me out, and I would like to welcome Rachel Corey to the stand.
Good evening, school committee. Tonight, I will be recapping this year's successful pep rally, a tradition of VR that has brought the school together. On November 27th, the high school held a pep rally in a fully decorated gym. The class officers of every grade decorated their side of the gym, and the senior class ran the event. There was an amazing performance by our championship team, as well as our step team. There was also a basketball competition, the classic scavenger hunt, and the tug-of-war battle where the teachers came out victorious. The whole school was decked out in red attire to represent VR in a school-wide event. Soon after, on December 7th, the NHS and art club ran a very successful breakfast with Santa event at the high school where all were welcomed. This was a holiday, this event had holiday music, food, face paint, and various craft tables that young children were able to participate in. Additionally, Santa was able to make it to stop by to take some pictures with all the kids. It was truly a great way of spreading Christmas spirit and uniting our community. I wish you all a very happy holiday. Unfortunately, Sophia couldn't make it tonight, so I'm just going to read her to her. She wanted to say, "Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Committee, and Superintendent Powers. Today, I'm going to talk about TJ Swerit's recent dinner auction held on December 6th. It was wonderful and fun and a festive time with many enthusiastic participants vying for an item to bring home. And with a wide variety of items provided, many lucky participates did. There were candles, candies, so far as from the UK, technology pieces galore, with even a bike hidden in a corner, all waiting to be brought home to be put under someone's tree. It was all about the auction items, however, even if, it wasn't all about the auction items, even if it might have been everyone's favorite part. There was also a dinner served where student members, as a gesture of appreciation to all the mentors, coaches, alumni, parents, and families for all that they have done for the TJ Swerit team. They put a lot into our team, so we wanted to pay them back. And all in all, this was a very successful night, and it helped to get everyone properly into the holiday sphere. Happy holidays and happy new year to everyone, from me and Sophia. And thank you, and I hope you have a wonderful night. I now welcome Kayla."
Good evening. Last week, the Postcar Healthcare Club started holding a high-end product drive. So, items such as soap, hand sanitizer, shampoo, and tissues are accepted and will be given community service for donations. Another event of the month includes a CPR information session held this Thursday. Interested students are encouraged to attend the event, learn more about the importance of non-CPR, recognize the location of APVs around the school, and even practice CPR on the weekends. Last week, the members of Postcar have been working diligently on holiday cards for individuals and their families in the hospital. All cards are donated to Boston Medical Center and aim to put a smile on one's face during the holiday and new year season. Thank you for your time, and I now welcome Sophia to the stage.
Good evening, everyone. On Simon and the Kiki Tree, an event created by Ms. Kendall Rayner's school. From 8:00 to 3:00, children could shop from the selection of donated goods in the high school cafeteria and have been brought to the cashier to be wrapped or bagged. Suit helpers helped little kids shop and also managed each station of products. Virgin Lives provided hot chocolate for the kids and hot coffee for the parents. It was an amazing opportunity for kids to learn about independence, and as one of the past years, a great time to add about customer service. It was a bone-free event that required everyone to be totally immersed in the occasion. Thank you for your time, and I conclude just a little bit.
I just want to thank the Student Advisory Council for being here for everyone. I definitely want you all to have a great holiday. I did want to take a moment to recognize our two seniors, Mr. Quinn Daly and Ms. Rachel Corey. I know Mr. Daly's been getting some college acceptances back. He's not ready to commit yet, so we're going to hold off on that. But I did want to recognize Ms. Corey. She was accepted and did commit to Parker's, so we want to congratulate her. So, I know they all work so hard and they do so many different things. So, there are early morning meetings, coming to our late-night meetings. They have a lot going on, so I'm really proud of them and the whole Student Advisory Council. They all do a million different things and are super involved in the school. So, congratulations to both of you. We'll wait until Mr. Daly's ready to announce. But I did want to recognize Ms. Corey, so congratulations and thank you. And that concludes our call.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. King. And we'll move on to the school improvement plan.
Yes, we have Mr. Bray, Mr. Clark. Mr. Bray's here from the George Mitchell Elementary and Mr. Clark here from the Williams Intermediate School. As you know, the school improvement plans are approved by the superintendent, but for our policy and procedure, we share those with the school committee. So, I'm going to start with Mr. Clark to provide an overview and give me a text, and then we'll move on to Mr. Bray.
Good evening, everybody. School committee, Mr. Powers, our guests. The Williams Intermountain School Improvement Plan for 2024, 2025. As a spokesperson, I'd like to thank the members of our committee, Mrs. Shapet, Ms. Lindsay Sullivan, Mr. Will Mackenzie, Ms. Kelly Clark, Ms. Ashley Todd, and Ms. Winnie Lucina. One of our, one of our goals was to kind of match our plan with the district plan. Under our Safe and Supportive School pillar, one of the things that we are excited about is we're accepted into the DESI PBS Academy. This has been helpful to improve our PBS missions. Under Curriculum Instruction and Assessment pillars, we are working with our ELL teachers for our language acquisition team meetings. This is where students, L students, student success plans are developed. For our Operation Action Plan pillar, we are doing monthly wellness walks with faculty, custodians, and admin. Here, we're looking at for building cleanliness, maintenance, and monitoring of our building upgrades. And for our Human Capital pillar, we are looking to increase our community connections, focusing on events such as our Blue Drive, our Senior Pen Pal Project, Art Night at the Library, working with Bridgewater State University with their teacher candidates for our writing buddies, and also working with our high school peer, Richard Myers.
Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Fitzgibbons, Superintendent Powers, and members of the school committee. The Mitchell School Improvement Plan is aligned with the District Student Success Plan. This plan was developed with the assistance from school administrations, staff, families, and members of the community. So, I would also like to thank the members of the Mitchell School Council who worked on creating this plan, retired fire chief Michael McDurnough, community rep, Ms. Hannah Pecaila, parent, Mrs. Diana Stewart, parent, Mrs. Nikki Littlefield, teacher, and Mrs. Kathleen McFatz, staff member, teacher. As you know, the District Student Success Plan, which drives the school improvement plan, is built on the four pillars, as Mr. Fox just remarked. So, under Safe and Supportive Schools, the Mitchell is focusing on expanding our school-wide PBIS initiatives. This goal will be accomplished by working with our PBIS committee, District SEL, who would be an contender, Rose, and the entire Mitchell staff. Under Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, we are focused on implementing with fidelity our new reading program with wisdom. We are monitoring curriculum pacing, utilizing our Title I reading goals to support teachers, and conducting weekly grade-level meetings along with District PD to assist with implementation. We are also using our iReady data in the area of reading to monitor student growth and progress towards PIER standards. Under Operations, we are focused on improving the overall safety of everyone at school by continuing our MERC team, which is Medical Emergency Response Team, which is led by our school nurse. In these meetings, we discuss and develop protocols and procedures for responding to medical emergencies in the building and receive training from our school nurse as needed. These have been very beneficial as we have had to utilize the team several times between last year and this school year. And finally, under Human Capital, we are focused on developing strategies to make our staff meetings more meaningful and productive for staff. We are trying to increase the amount of time staff spends collaborating with one another to plan lessons, discuss best practices, and utilize student data instead of just a presentation from administration. These meetings are more focused on student outcomes.
Any questions for Mr. Bray?
Sorry, you know, I'm actually just looking at both of these. I'm seeing that the measurable outcomes for GMES are much more observable, seeing the things you've been putting into practice and done, and comparing it to the Williams, where it's looking more like we're monitoring meetings and outcomes.
Would Mr. Clark or Mr. Bray like to address the question slash comment by Mr. Loach?
Mr. Loach, could you just repeat that one more time?
In comparing the two plans, I'm seeing much more, in terms of the measurable evidence of progress, much more observable outcomes at the Mitchell versus the Williams. The Williams, we're looking at a lot of agendas. We're looking at post-data. It doesn't look like there's much action being done in the actual measurable evidence of progress.
I appreciate that feedback. Obviously, I've chatted with Mr. Bray. Mr. Powers, may he reset it. Sounds good, appropriate. You'd like me to review that completely.
Thank you, Mr. Loach. Other questions, concerns? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I always like to say I got my start on a school council, so. I appreciate all the work that your committee members do. And, you know, it's, it's very important to us to hear from the very most atomic level, the school level. We hear things at the big district level, but to hear every individual school and what they're going through is key. So, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And I apologize to everyone. I, busy day at work, and I had to do some holiday stuff, and I was running a bit late, so. Not, not an excuse, just a reason. I missed it. All right. So, did we do Student Advisory Council, Ms. King?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, we're going to move back to Correspondence and Recognition.
Yeah, we just need to start with number two.
Number two. Okay, great. Mr. Lozama, I apologize for keeping you waiting. If you could just introduce yourself and whatnot, that would be great.
Great. Good evening, everyone. We're the school committee, educators, community members, students, Superintendent Powers. Keith Lozama with LFP Educational Services. Been working with the district for many years now. I'm excited to report out on the work that we're doing this year. Before I begin to share the great work that's happening in the district, I just want to acknowledge the leadership of the district for recognizing that this work is not a one-and-done effort. It is critical we continue to work and find ways to drive meaningful and lasting institutional change. Over the years, you have seen staff and leadership at every level be engaged with professional learning with the goal of building a culture where every student and family feels empowered, valued, and included. This evening, I will outline the work for the 2425 academic year. Following my remarks, I would invite you to ask any questions or share your feedback or comments. As we prepared for the 2425 academic year, leadership and I discussed and reflected on the absence of the DEI coordinator role, which was instrumental in fostering inclusivity across our schools. In the absence of this role, we've recognized the importance of maintaining the momentum of this critical work. As such, we created a professional development plan specifically tailored for leadership, creating a culture of inclusion and belonging, as well as providing our pre-K through 4 educators with professional development. Additionally, we introduced a new initiative led by our educators, your educators, known as the Champions for Inclusive Schools. So, let me begin with the Champions for Inclusive Schools. This initiative was created in response to educators expressing a desire to take a more active role in the work of DEI. The goal of this initiative is to address the unique needs of each school by identifying and implementing promising practices that promote equity-centered leadership, establish clear procedures, and provide consistent support for teachers, ultimately enhancing the educational experience and outcomes for all students. At the beginning of the year, we sent an email to educators to gauge their interest in joining this group. We were excited and thrilled to receive 26 responses from staff members and leaders who wanted to be part of this work. These individuals represent the middle school, bridge, and Bridgewater, Rainham, the high school, and serve in a variety of roles across the district. The Champions of Inclusive Schools are a passionate and collaborative group of educators who are deeply, deeply committed to this work. This work is guided by the district's Equity Statement and reflects our collective dedication to these values. The Champions of Inclusive Schools Initiative is co-chaired by Yolanda Beach, Para Joyce, and Christine Richards, with the support of LFP Educational Services. The focus areas for the Champions of Inclusive Schools are modeling and shaping values. How do we embody the values and beliefs and behaviors outlined in the district core values while cultivating a culture that prioritizes inclusivity and positions equity as a central pillar? Number two, school-wide support and accountability. Exploring ways educators and administrators can enhance their practices to support students, their staff, while developing school-based systems that sustain inclusive practices over the long term. And number three, district-wide rules of engagement. How are we establishing a collective set of principles and standards to guide educators and administrators to ensure they are creating a sense of belonging and inclusion? These initiatives, this initiative marks a pivotal shift from going from ideation to execution as equity and inclusion become part of the fabric of this community. Now, I'm going to talk about professional development for our leadership. This year, we are conducting a book study and in-person professional development for our leadership team, facilitated by one of our team members, Anthony Colina, author of Leading with the Head and Heart: A Practical Guide to Elevating the School of Today and Tomorrow. The book emphasizes the importance of balancing the immediate demands of schools with long-term planning, creating a sense of belonging, and integrating emotional intelligence into decision-making to inspire educators and staff. The work engages stakeholders just beyond the schools, encouraging leaders to take strategic action in building meaningful connections with parents, families, and the community. It challenges, this work challenges leaders to critically reflect on their practices with a particular focus on leading with their head and hearts. Now, I'll talk a little bit about our work of our pre-K through, our pre-K through professional development. So, on January 8th, we will begin our work with our pre-K through educators, focused on equipping them with the tools and strategies to create more inclusive classrooms. The workshops aim to offer practical resources and strategies to help educators foster a sense of belonging within the classrooms and school communities. These sessions empower staff with actionable insights and skills to build inclusive environments where every student and educator feels valued and empowered. We use case studies and model scenarios. Educators will simulate classroom situations to practice and apply inclusive strategies effectively. The work this year is critical to the district's ongoing mission to ensure that every educator feels supported and equipped with the skills, knowledge, and resources to best serve our students every day. I keep saying "our students" because I feel like I'm arguing with you. In closing, I want to emphasize that this work is an ongoing journey. In addition, it has made significant strides in creating a school community that continues to refine leadership and staff skills necessary for success. So, I'm deeply grateful for, to work with educators, leaders, and community members who champion this important work. So, thank you for your time, and now I welcome any questions or feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Lozama. Questions from the side table? Questions from the side, Mr. Loach?
So, this might be more of a superintendent, none of the trainings for Williams and Janice happening?
So, the first training will be on January 8th. It will be the release day, and then we have another one in the A-roll. May?
A roll.
Another one, yes.
A roll.
So, we're basically, our rollout plan the last couple of years has been, we've done it by level. And so, what is happening now, pre-K through 4 happened last year with the high school and middle school schools, and then they'll roll that out at the elementary level this year.
Because there's still been a lot of feedback from community that incidents happening at both schools, and both teachers and administration haven't actually been able to handle it or address it within the school. So, they're either appealing to parents for their advice, or it's just not getting addressed.
Further questions, comments from Mr. Lozama? Mr. Lozama, I do have a question. Could you, at a very high level, because I'm really not that smart, okay, explain how you approach DEI and helping educators, help children at a K-2 level versus a, you know, fifth to eighth grade level versus a high school level? Because I'm sure it's a very different conversation with students and a very different approach. And if you could just give us a flavor of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think most of the work is really getting to the hearts of our educators, right? And really tapping into their practice and being able to empower them so they can empower our students. And that looks very different due to two, all the way to the high school. So, when we think about, just for example, our middle school students, you can think about our young ladies in middle school, right? What are ways, when the young ladies are interested and passionate about being in science, how do we continue to empower them? As we look at the data and what the research tells us is that they start to lose that passion for science during the middle school, right? So, what are ways in which then we are able to show that our classes are inclusive, that when they step into the classroom, that they are feeling empowered, that they're feeling valued, that we have a curriculum that's responsive? So, it works very different, you know, across K through, K through 12. But the main thing is really, and this is why we're moving to, you know, leading with our hearts, our minds, and our heart, right? And really tapping into the ways that we cultivate that, that sense of belonging which kids feel about.
Great. Thank you so much. Anything else from Mr. Lozama? Thank you for coming. We certainly appreciate. We appreciate all the work you've been doing with the district. And we feel like you're part of the district too, so.
No, thank you. Mr. Chair, I mean, I just again want to thank Mr. Dr. Lozama. He has been a true partner.
I told you you were a doctor, sir.
He has been a true partner to us. He's been very instrumental in our rollout. Even before we had the DEI position, we decided to engage with Dr. Lozama and his partner. And we've just continued that relationship every year. He's been a great sounding board for myself, our district administrators, building administrators, and certainly now, willing to our staff. So, I just wanted to publicly thank him for all his efforts and commitment. He really is part of the district, and so I'm not surprised to hear him say "our students."
Thank you. All right. Moving on to meet our interim Special Ed Director, James Leonard. Mr. Leonard, the floor is yours. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me. You know, I think the best way to kind of introduce myself is to provide a little bit about my background. I've been in education for 25 years in various capacities. I started as a building sub at Walter's Middle School in Mansfield, and then worked my way through becoming a special ed teacher. I can fill up for 12 years, onto a team chair, and then onto administration. In Mansfield, I had the honor of working in my own hometown, working in the same community where my children attended school. So, my last 10 years there was as an assistant director, and then the last six as a director. Found special ed administration to be very enriching. I feel very much at home working with our students with disabilities and those, staff members and service providers, helping those students. members and service providers, helping those students. So I think the cornerstone, what my commitment to special education has really been through, you know, building, building confidence through compliance and also empowering our staff to build capacity. So it's, you know, kind of a servant to our families, our students, and our staff. So I'm very happy to be here in Bridgewater. I've had a very short time. I retired in August, and so I came back from some world travel and found myself back here. It's very interesting, I've been in the district for fourteen days. To be honest, it seems like it's been so much longer than the best of it is. Been welcomed by every building. I've started the staff meetings, met high school staff today, and been touring around the district to meet with each building-based staff. You know, some of the targeted areas I'm working with is kind of identifying how we look compliance-wise, making sure that we meet timelines. We owe that to our families. And so we're going to work through that, start working with our families. As you probably, as you probably know, there's a new IP form that was issued by DESI. We're working through that to make sure that our staff become more familiar with crafting those IPs. I have to say, the ones I've been reviewing, they look really good. So it's kind of, it's an intuitive form, but it's going to, it's going to take some time to kind of go to speed. So I have a meeting with the CTEC executive board on January seventh. I'm looking forward to meeting with them, hearing their concerns, and then working collaboratively to try to address some of the concerns maybe that probably exist.
All right, questions, comments for Mr. Leonard? Starting on this side. This way? No? Um, I, I did have a chance to meet with Mr. Leonard a week or so ago for about half an hour, and just to give him the lay of the land, in my opinion. Very open gentleman, I will say, full disclosure, I have a friend who's on the school committee in Mansfield, so Mr. Leonard comes highly recommended from my friend in Mansfield. So we're, we're happy to have you here. The thing that's most important to me that I heard again tonight, that I heard last week, was confidence through compliance. We need to make sure we're following the laws. And, and the other thing that I think I can speak for the school committee, everyone can shut me down if I'm wrong, is we need to know what we don't know, and we need to know what it's going to take to make us compliant, to make us into a district where we can be confident in the special ed services we're delivering to all our children, or perhaps in placing them out of district when it comes to that. And to create a culture of collaboration amongst the special education department, teachers, parents, et cetera, the whole community, to make sure we're always focused on what's the best interest of the child. And I got that feeling from you, so if you'd just like to elaborate on any of that, I went on for too long.
No, so part of my commitment to Mr. Powers was to kind of conduct a two-pronged approach during my tenure here, right? One is to really look at the capacity assessment and also a needs assessment. And then when you combine those two elements, it gives you a much clearer picture of proper level of staff compliance, certification levels of teachers, appropriate model of providing special education services, looking at our percentages of students in full inclusion versus full inclusion, partial inclusion versus substantially separate placements, and then making sure that a wide range of programmatic supports will allow us to keep our children in our district where they really are, they're entitled to that, that is just going to be part of their own school community. But you have to have the right programmatic support to support that needs. So that's part of my commitment to Mr. Powers, to kind of make sure that I gave him a really clear-cut picture of where we stand.
Thank you. Any further questions? Is there a question?
Not a question. I would just say I appreciate your comments and kind of where you're focusing, or even the two weeks you've been here, what you've already picked up on. And so I just want to say I appreciate those, you know, your ability to have conversations with our staff and before with our families around, you know, some of the challenges that we've faced, which I'm just, again, and I too, Mr., it's given us a familiarity with folks at Mansfield, and you've come very highly recommended. So I appreciate your work here and your support for the district.
Anything else for Mr. Leonard?
Mr. Chair, I just, again, just want to thank Mr. Leonard for joining us, for being willing to come out of retirement. It has been fourteen days, it does feel like longer, but in such a great way. The amount of areas that he's been able to identify and the progress that he's already been taking and making in those fourteen days is certainly very impressive. And so we're, we're excited what the rest of the year brings, and we look forward to continuing to work with him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leonard. Thank you for coming in, and you don't know how hard it was not to make a reference to the jerk when you guys were talking about, it was only two weeks, but it seems like a long time. Look it up if you don't know. All right, so we're back on these unscheduled administrative and school committee reports. Mr. Powers, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, members of the administrative team, and for those listening at home, our community members, good evening. I just wanted to provide a few quick updates for you. As you know, last week, we had some electrical challenges at the Rainham Middle School, so I just wanted everybody to provide a little bit more information on those challenges that I informed you about. Last Tuesday, there was a power outage in the area of Rainham Middle School. Power was, and actually, Mr. Chaka, Mrs. Barry, and I were actually there for the power outage when we heard the school was running on generated power, we got over there. While we were there, TMP had arrived on scene in the area to restore power to the area. As they started to do that, they were only able to return two of the three phases, learning new things as I go. There were three phase, three power phases that come into that building. They were only able to restore two of the three phases, which still required the generator to be engaged. At that time, because between the two phases of the generator, there was certainly a large amount of power coming into that building, and it did cause some of our fixtures to really surge and begin to smoke. So we had what we thought, so the fire alarm went off. We discovered that in one of the fifth-grade hallways on the first floor. We did have a pretty good smoke condition coming from one of the light fixtures from one of the ballasts. Obviously, the fire department was notified by the alarm activation, and because they were already on, in the area for a previous incident, they actually, Deputy Chief Johnson responded right away. He was able to call for additional resources. At the same time, we began a sweep of the building. Obviously, our students were being evacuated, but it was then discovered up in the eighth grade pod on the other side of the building that we had a very similar situation up there, producing a large amount of smoke. And then in the back hallway of the building, Mr. Chaka and his team discovered that there were some light fixtures that had blown there as well. They hadn't really started to smoke like the other two. Once it was determined kind of what the initial cause was, powers, the two phases were shut down, those fixtures ended up stopping to smoke. Fire department was able to vent the building as best as possible. We did bring the students into the gym and into the cafeteria. It was probably about quarter of eleven at this point, once we kind of knew what the plan was. The problem was the odor left by that, you know, burning material up on the lights was so strong and pungent, because it was in multiple areas of the building, I didn't really feel comfortable putting students or staff back into those areas. So my first thought was, do we relocate our students to a different area? We had reached out to, you know, La Libbidi and Merrill and kind of put them on notice. We may be moving students there. And we also called Lucine Bus right away as well, just to say, you know, we may have to move students, we have students outside, and Mrs. Lucine is great, she sent us buses and vans right away, so if we had to have students stay on the buses to stay warm, we could. But at that point, really, we were going to bus the students to La Libbidi and Merrill to sit in the cafeteria and the gym there. So why go through that exercise? So I made the decision to just go ahead and have an early dismissal. I did have some reservations about putting our middle school students on a bus going home, just because I, you know, although our policy doesn't require someone to be there at the bus stop, I'm also mindful that, you know, putting a fifth grader home alone, maybe unexpectedly, you know, could cause some angst and stress, and same thing for six, seven, eight. So I did make the decision to just make it a parent pickup. So we ended up doing dismissing over seven hundred students. Mrs. Shuret had put an email and had recorded a call. We discovered from some feedback that unfortunately the call didn't process. So we did send a follow-up phone call out. It was one of those that we didn't really notice, just because of the sheer volume of parents that were there. We figured so many had received that call and email, but then thankfully, we got that feedback that that didn't go out. I think by the time we finished dismissal, we had about twenty-five students left, I think it was about twenty-five, Mr. Barry, that just couldn't be picked up. We had made contact with the parents, parents just couldn't be there, so they did ask us to put the students on the bus at the end of the day. So we planned at that time to run a normal dismissal, parent pickup, buses, but again, at that time, we only had, I think, one student that was going to be parent pickup, and the rest were buses. And so Mr. Lucine had arranged for those buses to still show up, and we went through dismissal as, as normal. And then, you know, that particular day, again, we always, you know, take feedback. I think our big thing, you know, we've really worked on communication. That presented some challenges because we were outside. We're used to maybe having things going on in the building where we can get to a computer and send out a quick call or email. Because there was obviously a smoke condition, we were evacuated from the building, we really were kind of unexpectedly facing that challenge. We've obviously put some measures in place, so now we have, everybody has an app on their phone, and we can use School Messenger to communicate through an app if we're not able to get back into the building. So, you know, we're always trying to take feedback and learn, and I know Mr. Chaka and his team were on site that day. Mrs. Richards and Mrs. Joyce came over to join us, and many other staff members from RMS pitched in. So as, as always, there's areas to learn and grow. I do have to say, you know, very proud about the students and staff responding. We thought that the issue had been resolved. However, as I notified you on Friday morning, right before arrival, the fire alarm was activated again, and they did discover in one of the classrooms in the back hallway behind the gym that there was a smoke condition in there as well. We initially thought it was probably going to be just where the smoke was coming from, another light ballast. Electrician was, I actually think he was even closer, had already been there because he was, he was there quite quickly, as was our HVAC tech and some of our other staff. Mr. Chaka, Mrs. Barry and I went, went over as well and met with the fire department. They, because it was isolated to one classroom, kind of a back hallway, we really opened school as usual. The smell was not as strong as it was the last time, and because there was exterior windows, we were able to vent, the fire department did a great job of venting the building right away. There was still some lingering smell, but more in that classroom, it certainly hadn't spread throughout the building. So that's what, you know, the difference in terms of our response. You know, they didn't deem any concern, danger. As upon further investigation, it seems as though that there was a motor in the ceiling above the light fixtures as part of the heating system that one of the belts burned out in that motor. And so that's what actually was causing the smoke. In talking with the electrician, talking with the fire department, Fire Chief Lucivita, there certainly is a possibility that those two events were related, that the power surge on Tuesday could have taxed that motor already, and then, you know, just by the end of the week, had just, you know, the motor had wasn't able to continue to run. Or it really could have just been a coincidence. Certainly had that happen, I'm sure, you know, in other businesses, areas, homes, you know, light fixtures do burn out on occasion, motors do burn out. So we weren't really a hundred percent able to determine whether or not it was a coincidence or it was related. Certainly, our electrician remained on site as he did that first day. He went through as much of the systems as possible, checking out the circuit breakers to make sure that there weren't any other areas that were tripped or any other, you know, faulty areas and obviously had gotten in the building. And, you know, we're closely monitoring that situation. Thankfully, we have not had any additional problems, so we're hoping that that is resolved itself. But happy to answer any follow-up questions in regards to Rainham Middle School. But again, thank the staff and the police and fire that responded both times so quickly. And, you know, they were, that Tuesday, the first incident, they were stretched pretty thin across town, and so, you know, we had several fire fires. Once they were able to clear other events on scene, which was great, but they were, they were there, as were police. We had, you know, the police chief, the fire chief, helping out, and the best part of our partnership with them, even once they were cleared, they really could have left. They said, how can we stay and help with dismissal? You know, could we help, you know, sign the kids out? And they did, they stayed on scene the whole time. So it was really, it was great, and I appreciate all the efforts of Chief Lucivita and Chief Richards that are out there.
Questions on RMS for the Superintendent? Mr. David?
Mr. Powers, where the school, I think, Rainham Middle School, if I remember correctly, opened in two thousand, so it's approximately twenty-three years old. This is the third incident with the school, the first being the clog and leak that caused us to spend money to replace the gym floor, which I do know now we have to change the bleachers there because it's ruined the floor. Why would we be these incidents? Is it probably time to do kind of a complete audit of the school to see what needs to be replaced so we don't have similar incidents and not, where the budget's getting tighter and tighter, having to keep on going back and spending money to, I mean, given, you know, wear and tear, but take care of some things that can be avoided from bigger issues replacing the floor, electrical fires.
Right. So I, I think to that point, certainly, I think a lot of those issues that you're, I think you're speaking about that, you know, would show up when we do preventative maintenance, when, you know, we either through our own maintenance team or bringing in our outside vendors to go through our HVAC systems and so forth. We have done some work over there the last few years, updating the boilers, the hot water system. I think, you know, the school committee knows about that. We had a temporary hot water system over there we're replacing, have done some AC work. So those types of things have been ongoing, and I think obviously to your point, twenty-three years old, it's probably time. I think overall, you know, other than, say, last week, what stood out, that gym floor obviously really flood-related, there was a drain issue. Mr. Chaka has a pretty solid plan in place. We haven't, again, had any issues since he's put that in place. I do think there's probably some additional site work we could do there to maybe prevent further issues. I think that electrical issue last week, just given kind of the freak situation of what happened in the area, there was an electrical issue with the tunnel rain, was putting a new pump station in, actually behind the school. It was actually, that's where the electrical issue actually started and it knocked out power to the school and obviously the surrounding areas. But, you know, we can certainly make note of any big things coming up as our maintenance team is going through that building, or our outside vendors, and see if there's anything that needed worth doing that we haven't already put on the capital plan. You're right, I think, you know, as a homeowner myself now of a house that's still fairly young, eleven years, I feel like I'm replacing things all the time now, so I can appreciate on a much larger scale as a school district, how much more expensive those things are. And I'm made, unfortunately, like they used to be, my parents had one refrigerator in the time I was growing up, I guess I'm only a little bit of a grown-up. I do appreciate that, but being as proactive as we can.
Other questions from Mr. Powers? Mr. Robert?
Yeah, I have a, on the communication issue, I know I was a parent that was part of it or involved in a student there. You know, I think it was a good learning opportunity of like calls, did you go out and emails, did? And that's great to hear that you all have resolved or figured out a resolve of that. Is that district-wide? My question is a district-wide and not just RMS, because this, again, can happen across schools.
Yes, so we had Mr. Schants and Ms. Cohen as part of our kind of after-action debrief, make sure that we are set up so that all of our principals, working on our assistant principals, district administrators, all have the app. Ms. Cohen walked through in terms of how to subscribe to all of our different distribution lists. Mr. Schants is working to make sure, because the other issue, once the power went out, we also didn't have any internet. And so we did have generated power, but no Wi-Fi. But Mr. Schants has in the past, and he's, I know we have some new administrators that have joined us since, rolling out, making sure that everybody has a hotspot to be able to utilize as well. But we should be set up and ready to go.
Anything else on that? Anything further, Mr. Leonard?
Yes, just two other quick items, Mr. Chair. The district team and I, as well as Ms. Watson and her team, attended a DESI conference call this afternoon to discuss MCAS. As you know, the competency determination is no longer tied to MCAS. The MCAS assessment will still be given, but what districts now will have to determine on their own is what that competency determination will be for our high school students. So there's really two things that we'll need to identify over the next month or so, and we certainly will bring it forward to you, is And, you know, we certainly will bring it forward to you is how are we going to determine students meeting their competency determination? And then how are we going to obviously review our graduation requirements? Obviously, if they're, you know, what Desi shared today is if they're meeting their graduation requirements by default, they should in some cases be meeting their competency determination and not all cases that, that may be happening. So we want to make sure that we're identifying both pathways for our students to be able to still meet that competency determination and also the graduation requirements. It's not required, but recommended that we, you know, bring that forward possibly through policy and we get a policy in the school committee going forward. You know, I hate to say in typical DESI fashion, but, you know, more information to come. They did give us a lot of information today, certainly enough that we can start putting pen to paper and we have a meeting scheduled for when we return from the break with Ms. Watson and her team and obviously Central Office Team to start crafting what that will look like. Happy to answer.
Questions is several.
What would an example be where their graduation requirement wouldn't be good enough, I guess?
So what they're, they're saying, the competency determination, they're, it's not tied to MCAS anymore. But what was assessed on MCAS is what they're saying your students should at a minimum be meeting. So for example, on the math MCAS, back in 2023, they were basically assessing algebra one and geometry skills. So what they're saying is that at a minimum, your students have to demonstrate that they've mastered or, you know, met the competency determinations in algebra one and in geometry. We could have us, well, you know, not necessarily us because our, our path is algebra one, geometry, algebra two. They use that example today that some high schools may require you to take four years of math, but they don't necessarily say you have to take algebra one, geometry and so forth. So it could be a case of you maybe took algebra one but never took geometry. So you really haven't mastered those skills that are related back to the 2023 MCAS. Same thing in science, they use the example, right now, 2023 science MCAS is biology, physics and tech and engineering. They said you could maybe have a local requirement where you take, you know, life science and geology. Those skills aren't transferable to what was assessed on the 2023 MCAS. And so they would be really different. You may have a local graduation requirement that says you can take life science and geology, but you don't have anything that says you have to be exposed to biology, physics, tech and engineering. And so if they're not engaged in those type of coursework or skills, then they haven't met their competency determination.
So now would they just be a requirement rather than elective or something? Like would we need some of the requirements?
And I think for us, and I could be oversimplifying it, when I think of our path, I think what we have laid out right now for, I think it'll certainly tie into what the competency determination will be. I think we have to be thoughtful of if there are any other students that maybe their path doesn't take that traditional course where it goes algebra one, geometry, algebra two, and how do we maybe, you know, adjust things for that.
So I just have a follow-up to that, Mr. Powers. So a student passes, let's, let's say they get a C in algebra one and geometry. It from a Bridgewater-Rehnamm high school math class. However, their high stakes testing of MCAS, they continuously fall one or two points short. So they wouldn't have qualified as competent. Yet our educators see them as a C-level student passing the course. Is the idea that that would be good enough regardless of what your score is on an MCAS test?
So going forward, yes, that, that will really be up to us. They're saying essentially that we should try to align it so that students were meeting expectations prior on MCAS and that's what their competency determination would be. We should try to align our new requirements to what those meeting expectations would be. It's going to be somewhat difficult because we, you know, not giving an assessment like that. But obviously, I, I think we can look at our coursework and set either, and, and again, I'm just using examples, not saying we're definitely going to do this, but look at a minimum GPA or a minimum, you know, grade in those courses. Because if, you know, to your point, I think if we were to say, oh, you go to D, is that really showing that you're meeting the grade level expectations? And maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, you know, we'll have to kind of determine that as, as we work through that.
Okay, thank you. Go with this, I miss my right hand.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions. And they're not going to be resolved tonight.
Ask as many as you can.
They're not going to be resolved because even I know MCAS is official with math. You know, students right now could get a D, not pass MCAS, or I say, MCAS is for different kind of levels, I'd say, or ratings. And the, now you, whatever the plan is, you have to just take four years of math. And so will we, I'm assuming this will go, Mrs. Watson or yourself, will write up some kind of policy or recommendation that it would go to policy and, I don't want to say allow for exceptions, but like there are alternative paths for kids.
And that's really the term they kept using today is that we have to think of the pathway for our students.
And that would lay out a policy.
Yes, not just one student.
Because there's alternative paths now for MCAs, depending on what category, like it's like scorey, but. So that would be laid out and we would have to lay all of that out. And even whether, because I also question the exposure and taking a class versus passing a class is also two different things.
Exactly. And I think that's what we have to try to really, as much as we can flush out. I, I do know Desi did urge us today to really, so this may be something that we have to come back and refine, really looking at those students in the class of 2025 who haven't passed their MCAS yet. They won't have the opportunity to take it again to get their competency, competency determination. So we really have to have something in place, some type of certification procedure going forward this spring so that those students can actually graduate from high school. So what we put in place for the class of 2025 may eventually look different for future classes only because, you know, we may find that, oh, we have to make some revisions to this. We're really thinking about the small group of students we have in front of us now. What does this maybe mean going down, you know, good going forward? So I, I think what we, we're going to try to bring a comprehensive plan for you that covers everybody in the future. But it may be a case of option A is let's just focus on 2025 and then we may have to make some changes.
Yeah, yeah, incremental plan, right? Because we have no policy now, just as I think of, we have no policy. But our handbook, our student handbook, you know, it all it says is four years of math. It doesn't say like what level of math or it doesn't get so detailed in the student handbook. So I would need something, and maybe it's incremental, given the time.
You have a lot of questions.
Well, I think some of it's wait and see and what that.
I just wanted to make sure you had that all.
Well, yeah, around my head, but, um, but I just think it's wait and see what that policy or what is recommended from the district office and from Mrs. Watson of what that will look like. And I think hearing that it's incremental, I'm assuming a lot of districts are trying to work on this.
Yes, and, and Desi did share that you may or may not put out a, a model plan for districts to use. I think they're really looking at, you know, the new law, the, the updating statute of the law really puts you on its back on the districts. And I don't, I don't want to say Desi is kind of wiping their hands clean of this, but I think their response is, well, this is what the law says, it goes back on you, you know, kind of figure it out. So, but they, they are giving us enough guidance to move forward.
My other question is, because many other states have competency, like they have these court departments already. Is MaaS looking at any, disemplying any kind of thing? And I don't know if they've had the chance or like from other states that have some of the court competencies already, other examples.
So the only thing they put out thus far is like a legal, legal brief on, you know, the election results and what they come forward. They haven't necessarily given us examples of.
Of what other states.
Anything else?
Last item, yes, and I, I know Mrs. King will touch upon this, so I will do my best not to steal her thunder. But we did, and I know some of you attended as well. We met with town officials in the beginning of December to review our, our current fiscal situation and our future fiscal situation. So we did have three members from the town of Rehnamm, Mr. Barnes, the town administrator, Mr. LaVale, the finance director, and Mrs. Pat Riley from the select board. And for Bridgewater, we had acting town manager, Blithe Robinson, and Laurie Gruen, Ms. Laurie Grueney, who is their finance director. At this meeting, as I know I've shared with you, members of the school committee and the public, I drafted a letter and sent that to the town, just kind of outlining some of the challenges that we're currently facing due to a reduction in staff, as you know, we're down twenty-four positions from last year. And, you know, what the challenges that those twenty-four positions, not having those twenty-four positions are presenting. And really the need to bring those back with some additional positions. And these aren't, as I outlined in the letter and I've shared with you in the past, these aren't, you know, positions that would, you know, just be nice to have. These are positions that we need. When we look at, you know, in all whole, I think to offer a minimum level of service that, as Mr. Leonard talked about, is, is meeting compliance and meeting regulations and providing opportunities for our kids. You know, we're looking at not just those twenty-four, but really almost sixty positions. And, and I, I do think that would get us to a place where we are offering a quality education. And that's not to say that we're not now. I think our educators are working as hard as they possibly can. And, you know, they're, they're up for the challenge or up for the challenge of high class size and what that means and the impacts that have, not just on them, but also the other students in the class. But we want to try to be able to provide additional support for them so that we don't have educators, you know, special educators with case loads of thirty, or we don't have class size of thirty. We really want to try to be able to provide lower numbers for our students, our staff, our community members. And so, you know, when we look at that number of almost sixty, and I, I know that's, you know, a significant number and obviously the price tag that corresponds to that, you know, that's not everything that we've, we've talked about in the past. You know, I know we've talked about middle school electives, you know, that, those sixty positions that don't include that. You know, the, the, the sixty, at a minimum, and obviously when, as you get my preliminary budget in January, you know, we'll certainly be talking about these additional positions. But that, that, those sixty positions, I think are critical. We've really tried to operate with doing more with less and we're at that critical point where I just don't think we can do that anymore. So really advocating to the towns, here is what we're, you know, potentially coming in asking for. How they choose to fund our budgets is really up to them, but, you know, we're not really aggressing to the, oh, you can't beat that number. It really is, this is the number and you have, you have to beat it. So we'll, we'll see how that, that goes during the budget season, but, you know, just wanted to add a quick update on that.
And I'm going to just ask, we hold comments until Ms. King's report because, you know, you have budget discussion on it and we can have a little discussion then, if everyone's okay with that. So thank you, Mr. Powers. Do you have a favor? Speaking of which, budgets on committee report, Mrs. King.
Thank you, Mr. King. On Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-four, the budget subcommittee met at five-thirty in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Davenport, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Mary, Mrs. Babalola, Director of Business Services, Ms. Robichaud, District Treasurer, Ms. Healy, Director of HR, Mrs. McDougal, Reporting Secretary, and myself. First on the agenda, we had a discussion of the fiscal year 2025 budget update. Ms. Babalola gave an update on the fiscal year 2025 budget from November first through November thirtieth. The budget is currently frozen as it has been since October first, and there has not been any significant change. Highlights included during that discussion, the budget is ninety-nine percent in coverage at this point. We are monitoring and watching the following lines as we normally do. Page four of that report is the sub-line, specifically the teacher class coverage line. So we are, we do have enough in the total sub-line, but that teacher class coverage line is high at this point. So that will be, need to monitor. Page eight, which is transportation, as always, we monitor transportation as new students move into the district and that increases transportation. Page nine, utilities, as we know, we did start our new utility contracts as of, Ms. Babalola was at November when that began. So those did, we did factor in that new contract pricing, but we will watch that and see how the winter goes and how those lines look. Page twelve, which is special education and out of district tuition. Again, we do have circuit breaker funds and those funds will get reclassified at the end of this quarter. But we do always watch that out of district tuition as new students, which may be, which may need those services, go into that line. As of next month, this, Ms. Babalola will be giving her quarterly report for the January meeting. This US budget right now looks stable and on track with spending. Mr. Powers also discussed several special education positions that are needed within this budget due to increases in students and case loads specifically at the high school and at Williams. I know we've mentioned a couple of times special education and Mr. Leonard and his commitment to compliance. So that was necessary as we are specifically out of compliance at the high school and colleges right now. So we did have a discussion on those positions that are needed. Second and most importantly, we did have a lengthy discussion on the fiscal year 2026 budget preparation. Mr. Powers gave an update on where he was in the fiscal year 2026 process. He's been meeting with all of his admin teams and to gather their budget requests. He's also been meeting with the towns. As we stated, Mr. Powers hosted a joint budget meeting with representatives from both towns and Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Davenport and I were also there on December third. During that meeting, Mr. Powers and members of the budget sub explained the dire financial forecast of the district, particularly as we are down those twenty-four positions from last year and with the new student growth that we have already had this year, already additional almost two hundred students since the beginning of this school year. Upcoming budget sub on January twenty-first, Mr. Powers will be presenting his preliminary budget before the January school committee meeting. We're also in the process of scheduling a joint town council school committee meeting with Bridgewater, which is part of their charter, which will be either at the end of January, on January twenty-first or February fourth, and that has not been set yet. A particular concern during this budget conversation was special education and the increase in the amount of students we have and the lack of compliance we're having, which we do not want to be out of compliance with the state nor do we want to be out of compliance with families. And not giving that huge percentage of students the services that they require and that they need and the amount of support they need as well as the staff. And as always, we talked about class size, which is, has been a conversation that staff has been bringing to us, especially the unions and parents and teachers. So those were all a discussion and where we're going to be at in January, where we get Mr. Powers' budget and how the towns are going to refund it. So I'll pause there.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, discussion?
Question or discussion on either FY twenty-five budget where we are or FY twenty-six, where we look like we're going, Mr. Davenport?
Mr. Powers, I know you mentioned during our budget meeting that you would create a list where you should share with parents or, you know, like contracts that we can all reduce in regards to state or town.
Yes, yes, correct, yes. In the process of doing that now, some of the newly elected officials, because they haven't taken office yet, their state contact information isn't, isn't updated. So we need that to happen.
Other questions or discussions on FY twenty-six's budget? Mr. D, David?
I just, you know, Mr. Powers, I think you just sent the letter. I mean, I, I've been saying this for two years now. I know that, you know, Mr. Dolan, you know, when he was chair of budget subcommittee and made a promise that we weren't going to accept a million per answer the next time. Well, you know, we got to stay with him, the balance. You know, this is our community, this is going up and probably regrets saying this, but I feel for the students, it's the best thing to say to our elected officials in this town. No one likes a tax increase, but this is how we get the best education for our students. Looking at Mr. Powers' letter, we're the lowest spending in our little cohort, all right? Everybody says it's great towns to live in. What's one thing that people look at when they decide to move into a town? It's the school district. So I hope that the elected officials in each town realize this. And if it continues that we are forced to spend minimum dollars and not meet requirements for special education, have elected, elected, elective, sorry, for our students to better situate themselves when they go out in the real world, those towns, the towns are going to be dead. No one's going to want to move here. The property values are going to plummet. So I would stress to both communities to let their elected officials know this, look into it. It's out there on the internet about it all the time. You go to Zillow, one of the things that they talk about in the school. it all the time. You go to Zillow, one of the things that they talk about in the school districts, it's necessary. And I know that there's been this big push in Rainham about shooting down Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides, but we're at a crossroads. I strongly suggest that the public look into this and talk to the people, because I will tell you, I'm disgusted every year forcing our teachers to do more with extremely less.
Thank you, Mr. Damarino. Anything else? Mr. Dolan?
I got those statements. Completely agree, but also just, obviously, to remind us, you know, the first two weeks of the job, really get updates on areas of concern, whether you have special education or report, anything's fine.
Anything further on budget, Mr. King?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna continue on that. I mean, last year, we only received a 2% increase from Bridgewater, and less than that from Rainham. We can't support that again this year. That barely covers our contracts, our contract, all of our contractual obligations. That's why we had to cut and not fill the positions. We can't support that for another year without cutting even more positions. And we're really bare bones, and even less than that right now. I mean, our funding, we create a budget and we bring it to the towns. We don't fund ourselves. Our funding comes from the state, which they also have not been funding us enough, as well as the towns. And yes, we're a department, but we are the largest department. And like Mr. Damarino said, when people come to our town, that's what they wanna know. What is your school district like? How are you building your students up for success when they leave your school district? And right now, we're not providing that success. We're not providing all of the services. We can't survive another year of just barely 2% and, and not expect to be even worse next year.
Ms. Conrady, Conrady.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, I would just like to add to that is, you know, something to consider too in our budget that we, we need to consider and we need to think about, is we are in the middle of negotiations with our teachers right now. Last year, our teachers took a 0% increase because of the budget concerns, and thank you to them, but they are working harder with less, and that is going to be an impact as we negotiate with our teachers right now on our budget in addition. So there is no way that we can sustain all we need plus a teacher, a new teacher contract with what we had last year. It is not possible.
Anything move further? I wanna be very clear. That's why I moved the microphone closer to me, so people can hear me without a doubt, and I'm open right in the microphone. FY25, FY25 is built on a $2 million donation from our surplus money from the prior budget. FY25's not gonna generate a $2 million surplus from this discounted budget. As you heard, we're gonna need to add a couple of staff members. We had a very unexpected difference between our earned interest and our expected interest last year. And we've consistently done this, and it's, it's gonna be about time to pay the piper on that one, unfortunately. That said, 24 positions lost last year. If we fund the same level of funding from the town, same type of increase, with a similar type of increase that we're getting from the state, it's gonna be another 24 positions lost. And that was with a 0% coming from the teachers union, the largest union we have. It's unfair to ask somebody to go two years in a row on a zero, in my opinion. We have to get creative as towns, as communities, to fund this district the way it needs to be funded, period, end of story. That is my plea to both towns of Bridgewater and Rainham. Thank you. Moving on, Ms. King, substitute secretary, please.
Thank you. Another issue that Mr. Powers had brought up is the secretary subrate. We're having a very difficult time also when secretaries are out to attract people to cover those positions. As we know, each school only has maybe one to two secretaries. It's not a position we can leave open. Right now, I believe the secretary rate for a substitute is $15 per hour. Mrs. Healy, if that's incorrect?
That's correct.
She's having a very difficult time filling that role at a low rate. An idea that Mr. Powers and Ms. Healy had brought to us is to have retired VRR SD secretaries to fill those positions. It's a very small pool of people to pull from, but it would be someone that they could go to. However, at the low rate, they are unable to attract those people. So they did offer that, as we have done with a few of the other positions, such as retired custodians, to attract those retired people that they would not have to train or oversee, and still be able to fill those job positions that are needed, is to raise that retired rate for secretaries to the step one of the CBA. We did speak to Ms. Babalola, would we be able to support that, and would it make any much of a financial impact? And it will not, there's not that many positions where, it's a very small bargaining unit, and a very few people that we need to fill those positions. But it's not a position that we can really leave open if we need someone in that role. So with their recommendation, we, I would like to make a motion to increase the substitute secretary rate for Bridgewater, Rainham, regional school district retired secretaries to align with step one of the secretarial collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Say it by Mr. Damarino, discussion, Ms. King? Mr. Damarino, any other discussion? Seated, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seated, unanimous? Thank you.
We did also approve the budget minutes of November 19th, 2024, which were approved. Under other, Mr. Powers did note that the MARS and MASC have indicated that the governor's projected budget for next fiscal year of 2026 is expected to be released January 22nd. So we might have more accurate, accurate fiscal year 2026 budget numbers after that time. We did move, because of our lengthy 2026 budget discussion, we did move sports fees and parking fees to the January meeting agenda for budget. I also had a meeting with Mr. Powers and Ms. Babalola in January, I believe the 14th, to discuss base financial reports. So all of those reports and recommendations regarding the base program will also be on the January meeting as well. And that concludes my report, and so if there's any questions on that.
Ms. Conrady, Conrady.
I would just say, Mrs. King and to Mr. Powers is, this, this base issue needs to be resolved. We cannot keep going forward with base and losing the amount of money. It's been kind of kicked the can for at least a year now, if not more. So I think we need to try to resolve it sooner or later, given some of the budget concerns that we have.
No, I agree. That's why I am gonna meet with them and go over all the reports for each specific program, and come to budget with their recommendations, so we can hopefully get all of that brought to the full meeting and make some sort of decision on where we go with that.
And even, yes, because also summer's coming up, and what are those rates, and what's that gonna look like, and how do we sustain these programs, if we sustain them, or someone else does? That's what we need.
And here is Conrady, Conrady. Anything else on the budget? All right. And just to emphasize what Ms. King said, we do have new business to move our January meeting to the 29th, so that we can react to the governor's budget as it comes out on the 22nd, so that's why that's on there, so folks understand. All right, moving on, music boosters liaison update, Ms. Davenport.
All right. So earlier this month, I was able to attend the music booster meeting. The parents who are part of this group are truly passionate about music offerings to the students and the accessibility to it within our school district. They organize numerous fundraising events throughout the year to help support their college fund, where they annually give out scholarships for graduating seniors who are part of the program. This past weekend, they held their annual cookie grants event, where they brought their music and cookies to spread holiday cheer around the community, and it was a great success. Also this year so far, they have had other events, including however not limited to, a trunk or treat and various raffles. This cheerful time of year is all, is also a busy time of year for them. On top of the cookie grant last weekend, earlier this month, the marching band took, took part in a Christmas parade as well. The winter concert with the bands and chorus is also on the horizon. SENSA, Southeastern Massachusetts School Band Masters Association, will have their auditions for band and chorus at the beginning of February. Last year, 44 of our students auditioned and 26 were accepted. Let's hope for another great showing this year. Also at the meeting, we spoke about the needs of the music department, and they were wondering what to expect with the budget. Similar to what Mr. Powers shared in the December 6 version of the buzz, I also shared that this year's budget is going to be a challenge similar to last year's. Their hope is that music will maybe not only on the initial budget, but the final one as well. I share their concerns, and I believe many other parents do as well. However, as everyone just heard about the challenges we do have with the budget. I think music is a much-needed class, not only in our lower grades, but we should also hope for the ability to offer a variety and more in-depth options as student, for students progress through the school system. As a follow-up to the meeting, I emailed them to advise them that the initial budget presentation will be done at the January school committee meeting, and looking forward to attending additional meetings in 2025.
Questions for me to say, Ms. Davenport? Music boosters are one of the most passionate clubs of, of parents that here are gonna meet, and that's where they work so hard. All right, moving on, safety and security report, Mr. Dolan. Do you wanna bring the mic up so folks can hear you? This is important to the, I assume.
The safety and security subcommittee met on December 6th in Central Office Conference Room. Update provided where the first few rounds of fire drills have occurred, combust drills are ongoing, and all sites have done this one tabletop exercise with Alice. The major discussion at the meeting was in regards to Alice drills and student participation in response to an email. The consensus was students should participate, however drills should be done in an age-appropriate manner, different, at different age levels. There's also discussion around alarms, what to do with EMS considerations, we're also reviewing the reform on RANAM, update regularly. The next meeting, the safety and security meeting, is going to form a huge group of people.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan, for the update. Obviously, we can't get into any particular details. Maybe just the general questions, Mr. Dolan. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dolan, for the update. New business, is there much else you wanna?
Bye.
Just to the side, where you can't see it, it would be fun. Approval of payroll warrants dated November 28th, 2024, December 3rd, 2024, is there a motion?
There is.
Made by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. Damarino, discussion, Ms. King? Mr. Damarino, any other discussion? Seated, none? All those in favor say aye. It's unanimous, thank you. As much as welcome back now. Vote to move the January, let's take these as one motion if we can. Vote to move the January meeting to the 29th of January at, in this venue. The reason for that being is, you just heard, the governor's budget is expected to come out on 22nd, which is when we're scheduled to meet, so I think it's prudent for the superintendent to have a week or so to react to it, and then obviously, it's one of the bigger meetings of the year, people wanna see the presentation of the budget and where we are, and we always invite town officials, and I know the music boosters will be there, and I know all of the other interested parents will be there, so we've got a much bigger venue here. That said, is there a motion to change the date and venue of the meetings? Made by Mrs. Martelli, seconded by Mrs. Davenport?
Second.
I thought I heard you say something.
It was, it was, it was.
Oh, sorry. All right. Mrs. Martelli, any discussion? Ms. Davenport, any discussion? Any other discussion, Ms. Conrady?
I would just say, just to put it on the record, is, I understand the moving of the meeting. I have a current commitment, I'm out of town, and I cannot be in the 20th.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, and we hope it's, it's fun, right? All right, any other discussion? Seated, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seated, unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to public comment, do we have anyone from the public here to comment? Mr. Conrady, welcome up. Just name, name and identify yourself for the record, please.
Paul Conrady, president of the Bridgewater Area Education Association.
Thank you.
Let's make a few comments based on the things said at today's meeting. Regarding special education and compliance, I'll restate the association's position, compliance is on the district, not individual members. Regarding the funding of the schools, I implore the two towns to fund the schools adequately. When I started here 31 years ago, we were not at the bottom of the list for dollars per student, now a year we are. Let the thank school committee for their efforts to get more funding for the school. On behalf of the music boosters, there's a concert tomorrow night at the high school at 7:00.
Thank you very much, and my son plans our attention. All right, any other public comments? Seated, none? I do have, and you know what, I'm gonna open this up to the entire committee to wish everyone a happy holiday season, so starting with Mr. Damarino.
I'm glad she stood my voice one high now.
Yeah.
After all those years, just wishing everybody a happy holiday season. I know there are a lot of individuals, this is a tough time, just to kinda go over there, you know, if you're struggling, reach out. You know, my background, you know, being a lawyer, doing criminal defense, you hear a lot of stories about what people do around this time. Reach out, there's people, there's programs, you know. But to my fellow committee members, merry merry. Enjoy the time with your families. See you back here in the new year.
Mr. Martelli?
Thanks. Yeah, I would echo that, and yeah, please reach out to anybody that is in need. And I was a recipient of a cookie grand last weekend during a revue we make a day, and it was awesome. Three gentlemen came, and it was really good, it was fun, and I applaud them, 'cause it was freezing cold that day. And I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Ms. Davenport?
Yeah, really, to the community, administration, school committee members. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year, and excited for 2025.
That's good.
I just wanna say happy holidays to everyone and to the committee, and I hope everyone takes a luncheon break and a nice little reset, which I know everyone is stressed out with work and activities and everything going on, so I hope it's a nice reset and rest.
Ms. Dolan?
I wanna wish everyone a happy holidays, and especially hope our educators are able to take this time to reset and recharge and come back stronger.
Ms. Conrady, Conrady.
Do you have anybody else? And yes, everybody can reset, our students, our teachers, our staff, and come back ready to go, enjoy the year.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody out there. To build on what Mr. Damarino said, there are great programs in both towns. If you need any help, somebody knows someone who can help you, and... That's very important, because no child should not have a happy holiday season. I guess I'll close with that. Motion to adjourn? Named by Mr. Damarino, seconded by Mrs. Martelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?